Welcome to the Simsbury Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop. Um, it's March ninth, twenty twenty four at nine oh nine o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and I'm gonna ask everyone to rise for the budget.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, so we always start the budget workshop um with a public audience section. If there's anyone here, I don't know if anybody saw the sign in sheet. I don't think there was any names on it, so is there anyone here for public audience? Yeah, okay. Um, so before we turn this over to our town staff, I have just a couple of comments that I would like to make. Um, welcome everybody that's here today. And this is a workshop setting, as Mark pointed out, that we're here to try to get through the budget and see what we need and how much we can afford to spend. Um, I wanna thank the staff for all the hard work that they've done. They're in a nice lineup there. Um, and um, they, everybody's been working really hard on this since January. And probably Amy and Melissa since before January. Um, we just wanna acknowledge the lack of grandest growth that we're dealing with this year. So there's really not a lot of incoming new revenues. And we're hoping that our board as a goal addresses that in the, in the coming year and beyond. Um, we also realize that this is a post-reval year, so that all of us um that live in Simsbury have suffered, um, I shouldn't say suffered, have been impacted by tax increases due to the revale. So we wanna make sure that we consider that as we look at spending for the coming year or two years. Um, I wanna also say, you know, I, I would like to ask the staff if we could kinda keep track of decision points that we kinda push aside, because this is really to learn as much as we can about everything in the budget. And um, we're gonna probably be circling back to things where we need to get consensus or make votes on those items. And we also have Monday night is our budget adoption. So a lot of, oh, we're here today, we take back, we have some scenarios. We have the um Finance Department, Amy, Melissa, you know, work with those to see where we, where we end up. I think we're all here to make the best decisions that we can to benefit our community as a whole. So we have to keep that in mind. If we don't fund something, it's not personal, it's because, you know, we have limited resources going forward. Um, and the other thing I just wanna point out is um for the Board of Selectmen, we're here as a workshop. So we're gonna kind of lose some of the formalities that we follow, but to just make sure that everybody up here, you know, when you take the floor, you consider other people that might be waiting to speak. And we'll circle back to everybody if there's a second round of questions. So I just wanted to make that clear. Um, I think that's all I have here before I turn it over to the town manager and um key department personnel.
Thanks, thanks so much, Wendy. Well, good morning, everybody. If, if I could just take a, a few minutes before we kick off, I'd like to ask staff for the record, uh, for those watching the tapes later, to just uh stand up very quickly and introduce yourself, name and title, just for the record, even though we all know each other. We'll start in the back.
Orlando Cassiano Park Superintendent.
Brian Johnson Goldcore Superintendent.
Tom Tiberzky Parks Recreation Director.
Lisa Machelli Library Director.
Kristen Formanak Director of Community and Social Services.
Adam Kessler Deputy Town Engineer.
Kevin Kleymans Highway Superintendent.
Tom Roy Director of Public Works and Town Engineer.
George McGregor Planning Director.
Jenna Caulfield Police Commission, not employee.
Eric Gomes Human Resources Coordinator.
Nick Bolter Police Chief.
Chris Davis Deputy, uh, Police Chief.
Tom Fischel Deputy Town Manager.
Melissa Appleby Budget Director.
Amy Merryweather Finance Director.
And I'm Mark Nelson, your new town manager. I, I think this is my uh second month uh anniversary, so it's, it's the ninth. I started on uh January. I also wanna recognize our Board of Finance Chair, Lisa Havner, who's with us today, uh, and our colleagues uh from SVAA. Uh, just before we get to a very brief presentation, a, a couple of things to echo what uh our first selectman said. So in a workshop set, setting, uh, even though we're doing this as a, in the, against the backdrop of a, of a regular meeting, uh, what we're trying to do and hope for today is a collaborative back and forth, a lot of dialogues and conversation. Uh, we're encouraging board members to interrupt us, ask questions, uh, and I'm encouraging staff to, to do the same and uh, uh, jump in. Uh, we designed with Wendy's help an agenda that slightly changes the format, rather than getting a department head up for X number of minutes, uh, and doing it department by department. Uh, we're looking to go through essentially the bigger functions, you know, capital, CNR, operating, outside service requests, things like that. Uh, and the reason for that change is, is that we hope uh that it gives all of us uh more touches on the day. Uh, and then you'll see later in the agenda, uh, department heads also uh play cleanup for me for everything that we've missed. Uh, and also their goal is to circle back to any issues uh that, judging from the questions of our colleagues on the board, uh, or others, that uh they, they can then have an opportunity towards the end of the day, uh, to circle back to uh, finish anything that they need to. So with that, we'll go uh through a few slides just to frame our discussion for today. Um, I'm not gonna repeat what I did when I uh presented the budget to the board uh recently. Uh, but there've been a few slight tweaks, so we'll go through these uh quickly. Uh, and again, encourage any questions. Uh, this was distributed in advance, so I know everybody's had a chance to see it. Uh, we're just highlighting a couple of things on this slide. Uh, it is uh an increase in debt service of uh one point one million. Um, and we'll talk later in the day about the effect of the Latimer project uh on, on our bonding uh and what the effect of that has been uh to the taxpayers who approved that project. Uh, and you'll see the changes over in the, on the right, that's really, those are the main numbers that you're looking at. Uh, and uh, we have emphasized from the beginning, the revenue uh problem. Just wanted to say at the top that uh we, we uh had the benefit, Wendy and I, uh, and some of you, I think, to join uh the Board of Finance uh, uh, meeting uh recently, where the Board of Ed presented its budget. Uh, and since I presented uh the preliminary budget to the board uh recently, we've gotten additional guidance from the Board of Finance, which we'll talk about uh throughout today. So we know uh right at the top that the town manager preliminary budget that estimated a uh rather hefty tax increase is not uh doable from the perspective of the ability of our taxpayers to pay. Uh, and uh, I, I just wanna thank both the Boards of Selectmen and the Boards of Finance and Education uh for working together collaboratively uh, uh, to uh come up with uh some answers to the questions that we know we're gonna get today uh from this board and which we heard from the Board of Finance uh recently. So I, we were asked after my presentation uh to you uh recently to back out ARPA and, and that was certainly uh advice and uh good, good advice, so we've done that. And so you see uh a substitute slide from what we presented initially. This is uh with ARPA, it essentially removed, even though it was revenue. Uh, the town, as I said in my budget message, did a good job. Uh, all, all the players involved in making wise choices about how the ARPA monies were spent. Uh, but as everybody knows from our conversations and from your review of the budget, uh, ARPA is now uh essentially completely exhausted. So this slide shows you uh that the net expenditure increase doesn't change when you take ARPA out there. Obviously expenditures only looking at the uh expense side of the equation. Uh, as everybody knows, you know, the budget is, uh, you know, two, two, two sides, revenue and expenses. Uh, and at the top, you know, as we get into this, I think probably you'll hear it from our team. Uh, we appreciate uh the, the subsequent guidance from the Board of Finance that suggests ways to uh increase revenue, make some tweaks and, and certainly get us closer to their guidance on, on what might be uh a palatable uh, uh mil rate increase at the end of the day. Uh, so you're seeing no change uh from what I presented before, seven point oh two percent on the net expenditures. Uh, but just draw your attention to the two numbers on the top right, four point nine seven uh percent change for education and uh four point nine one uh for the town. You know, it is i- important, I think, and, and we'll, we'll talk more about this later in the day, uh, to keep in mind that what my preliminary budget did, among other things, it checked a lot of boxes. Uh, it put things in there that, that hopefully will evoke a, a vibrant conversation and, and you're a way in on prioritizations today, which is really the, the opportunity that's in front of us. Uh, but we presented the challenge of the revenue uh problem uh pretty well. But we also said that the percentage of total town spending between the Board of Ed's side uh and the town's side, uh, there's been a little bit of creep where, you know, Board of Ed is spending slightly more uh over the last couple of years uh as a percentage of the total, uh, and the town is spending slightly less. Uh, but overall, that uh, overall proportion of seventy five twenty five, we tried to uh be very respectful of that. Um, next slide. So quickly, again, you've seen this before on the revenue challenges. Uh, I, I don't have to go through all of this, but just to give you and put in perspective what the challenge is for this board at this point, as you uh consider the budget is really that last uh, those points of references. You know, if, if uh you only budget for fixed costs on both sides, uh, the tax increase would be five point two nine. To get it down to five, both the town and Board of Ed would have to cut two point seven million. Uh, that does not include any changes that might be authorized on the other side of the equation, on the revenue side, right? Uh, so to the extent you can uh consider things like increasing investment income and, and some of the other things that we'll talk about throughout the, the day and into the afternoon, you are closing that two point seven uh million dollar gap. Uh, and uh, I wanna thank again our colleagues on the Board of Finance who have worked with Amy and Melissa uh and had some really good discussions about other ways to do that. Uh, and we are, you know, for our part today, really focused on the expense side. Uh, but there'd be, I think the reason that I wanted to include this is uh to emphasize uh what our Board of Finance Chair said uh at that meeting, which is this is a three-legged stool. Uh, and we embrace that analysis, uh, that you've got the taxpayers as, as one leg and, and you've got the other components that uh share uh the, the total makeup of, of, of the budget. So, next slide. Quickly, uh, one more slide on the revenue challenge. Uh, you know, this is a slide you see routinely that just shows you that if you were to cut the town manager's proposed budget uh by each of those numbers, uh, you'll see the impact to uh, uh, twenty twenty five taxes. And then in blue, uh, you'll see the, the potential decrease to the average taxpayer's uh bill. So just uh, not gonna read them all, but you know, a four hundred thousand dollar reduction uh is uh gonna net out to about thirty five dollars per year per taxpayer. Uh, and as we'll talk about later, you know, our most recent Board of Finance guidance is suggesting that uh we cut more than a half a million. Uh, so to put that in perspective, you're somewhere between those two lines, but uh probably about fifty dollars or so would be a, a, a fair and conservative estimate about what we would be saving our individual taxpayers uh if we spend the day uh going through line by line, uh, looking to save five thousand dollars here or ten thousand dollars there. Uh, and uh, we're happy to pause there and take any questions before we go on to the bulk of this. Uh, if, if anybody's got any questions, Wendy, on, on revenues and the chat, just the basic challenges to frame the conversation.
No, just, I, I think we'll end up using that in the modeling, kind of when we get to where we need to see what we can actually do and where we're gonna find the additional revenue. Um, I did wanna insert one thing.
Yep.
It's somewhere we can um, in your, in your presentation, go through some of the Board of Selectmen questions that we submitted?
Yeah.
And ask, is that also, can that be posted online for people?
Yeah, absolutely. We've got copies. If anybody needs one, we can print one out. They, they were emailed, uh, I think yes, yesterday. We got all of those questions, I think, all of them, but, yeah.
I guess, yes, if, if everybody likes to go through them later. Not, you don't have to do it now, but maybe just do a highlight later on.
Happy to go through them. And I, and, and thanks for that reminder. I will say that the, that your, your board has been very engaged. Thank you all for the questions that you sent. Uh, you know, judging from the questions, again, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm the new guy in the room, but uh very uh, uh, good, high-level focused questions uh that, that really seem to me to, to indicate an understanding of these problems, which is why I think we can go through the, some of the revenue challenges are well understood uh, judging from the questions. So we will spend a little time, Wendy, going through the, uh, the questions and answers. Uh, next slide. Who's taking?
Me.
You are? Amy is on my left.
Um, so this is just a slide that we put together, we put together quickly on our debt service. So our Latimer Lane project, especially to the new board members, this was a project that was approved previously. And um, as you see in the budget, our debt service is one of our major drivers this year. So our debt service is about eight point nine million. And um, the majority of that is actually related to the brand new Latimer Lane renovation project. So it increased about fourteen percent. And then if you take a look at the bottom slide where it's highlighted, um, and you see that two point one million, that two point one million is the portion of that eight point nine million in debt service that's related to the Latimer Lane project. So if you were to remove that, then you can see that the tax impact goes from that seven point seven two percent down to five point four two percent. And it decreases the tax dollars from nine thousand um to eight 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 eight. So um, a reduction of about a hundred ninety four dollars in your tax increase just related to the Latimer Lane project. So just wanted to put some context into that, that that project, you know, we don't talk about it anymore because it's kind of in the past, we've improved it, we're bonding for it. But it is one of the major drivers related to the budget. And you can see that, you know, it has almost a two point three percent impact um on the tax increase uh because of the bonding.
Which voters approve by referendum?
Right.
Thanks.
So we thought that was perhaps a good segue, just um as we jump into capital. Um, who's, who's capital needs and um, that's just sort of something important to keep in mind as we talk about the debt service and what any impacts of that.
Yeah, the little village in the front row, but I won't say who. On camera, let's keep.
Yeah.
Shocking numbers, that's what that says.
Because that Latimer project, this slide is uh.
Right. And so for those of you following along in the budget book, the capital improvement plan, the proposed plan starts on page um one fifty seven of the budget book. Um, just by way of background, we are required by charter to create and adopt um a six-year plan every single year. Uh, the projects that go on the CIP are um those that are estimated to be two hundred and fifty thousand in value or greater. So that's typically things like roads, bridges, um, big construction projects, heavy equipment, things like that. Uh, so the list on the screen, these are our um proposed projects for fiscal year twenty five, which we also refer to as year one of the capital plan. Um, so another just point of reference on charter requirements, any projects that um are in excess of two percent of the annual budget for the current fiscal year are subject to automatic referendum. Meaning when we go um, have our budget referendum in May, they have their own separate question for approval on the ballot. Um, so there are two projects on this plan um in year one that would uh meet that threshold. That is the PAC project and the Flower Bridge rehab project. So we will obviously open it up to questions on the individual projects, but wanted to quickly just go through how we um propose to fund the CIP. Um, typically, our largest source of funding is uh bonds, which is the top row there. That second category called project savings or project authorizations, we use this on the CNR plan too. This is um a source of funding that um is related to savings from projects, from other projects um or uh prior authorizations for projects that will contribute to the project. For example, um, the Flower Bridge, we've already appropriated most of the money for that project and what we're asking for is a supplemental appropriation. So other sources of funds, the donations up there, that is also related to the PAC project. Um, assuming that the PAC fundraises for the balance of the funds needed for that. Uh, capital reserve fund, uh, that's a contribution also to the PAC project. Um, general fund operating transfer are um items that are budgeted for in an individual uh budget, uh, operating budget for a department, and then that money is moved from the operating budget over into capital to fund those projects. Some grant funding, zero use fund, and then we do budget for when we trade in vehicles, we do try to capture um the quote-unquote revenue from that to offset the cost. So that's just an overview of the funding sources, which you can take questions on that.
Got a question.
I should have put questions, if, if we were to approve some funding for the PAC project, um, how can we put that as a referendum item when there's outstanding dollars for it that would need to be um made through fundraising? So when we don't know that that has been raised or what the success of that will be.
Do you wanna take that?
Yes.
Um, so you're approving, you're not approving the revenue source, you're approving the expenditure to spend it. So it doesn't mean that you have to spend it, we don't have the revenue. The appropriation just goes by the wayside, if you will. Um, but you're approving the spending of the project or authorizing the spending. But if you don't have the revenue, you don't have to move forward with it.
Just a general question, um, for those that are new to the board, and I was trying to find where it stated, but um, any new item that wasn't in the CIP last year? So everything that's in the CIP from the previous year, right? So if we look at twenty five, twenty six, whatever's in that column today that we approve in our budget is going to be next year's column, right? So we, we should be looking at that in some regard as we approve this year's budget to make sure that, maybe not today, but when we, when we approve the budget as a whole, what's in that column is gonna become our next year's CIP.
It would be our starting point, yeah.
Our starting point, okay. Um, so just, that's just something to keep in mind. The other thing is, any new items uh that are highlighted in here, right? Um, in order, if we do decide to move forward on them, do they require, is it a four, not four, uh, two-thirds vote to move a new item to the agenda?
Yes, so another charter requirement that Wendy's talking about is if there are any projects in, showing up in year one of the plan that did not show up on, anywhere on the plan the prior year, you have to affirmatively vote. Um, I think you're right, I think it's two-thirds um to add them to the plan.
Okay, thanks.
And we would do that as part of your budget motions, which would be on Monday.
Yep, yep, the fun part on Monday. Um, so how do you want to?
I'm gonna go back to the list of projects.
Okay, great, great, great.
I'm sorry, it's very small, but I just kinda wanted to capture them all together. I think there's probably about fifteen projects in total for year one. Um, so I think we just envisioned kind of opening it up for questions on individual projects.
Um, so I would say, you think, I think a good way to go about it would be going down the list. What do you, what do you guys think? Um, and, well, I guess, how about, are there any questions from the Board of Selectmen? Well, there are, related to capital. So maybe as we go through these, we could call out the questions from the board. Um, just 'cause we've already asked them and they've been documented.
Also, um, do we want, in our questions and answers that we received prior from, that our board had for, to town, are there any that are related to these that maybe we should read off?
Yeah, that's, that's what I.
Yeah. Oh, you did, I'm so sorry.
I think I just. So. Maybe I didn't say it the right way, but yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So there are a couple.
Yeah.
And no particular order, but one of the questions was, when I look at the amount of bond in one year, fourteen million and all forty-five million, and the graph that shows us well over the eight percent guidance line, how, how does any of that line up to guidance? What can we realistically do? Uh, the question that says this was an issue a few years back, uh, that, uh, we'll remember when the CIP had pretty much every project in it. Uh, and some group, a, a group of folks went out to pull projects out uh and so forth. And then the question was, when Lee had the team prioritize projects, were they included? The answer to that is yes, but our overall answer was that we respectfully disagree that the guidance should preclude the display of projects the community may have an interest in knowing uh, are being discussed by this board, right? Uh, we agree uh in principle with the guidance, however. So really the question becomes how to display uh all of the capital projects uh to uh make sure that we're transparent uh in, uh, in our budget discussions about what's making it and, and what isn't. Uh, so, you, you know, certainly in my experience, capital plans have shown sources of funding where the funding is known. Uh, and only if you've made a conscious decision uh about a particular project that you will bond for it, uh, is the funding source bonding. Whereas what seems to happen here uh is that everything is bonding. Uh, and if you're not under the line, it doesn't make it or it shouldn't make it into the plan at all. I think, you know, again, uh, as everybody knows, I'm, I'm the new town manager, but with four, four new board members as well. You know, I thought it was important to have a, a wide open kind of, you know, almost a zero budget, uh, zero-based budgeting when it comes to the capital plan. That's why you saw so many things on there. And the questioner was, why do we have everything on there? Well, my rebuttal to that would be, if you don't have it on there, I'm, I'm really depriving you. Unless you individually know ahead of time about a project and ask us, you know, somehow or other, it doesn't make it to this type of public forum for the prioritization and ranking. So uh, that, that's just a high-level view of that. Uh, there is uh, related to this, uh, question two was, what is the Board of Finance guidance regarding general fund reserves and are we within that range? Uh, the answer is per the fund balance policy, unrestricted fund balance should be a minimum of fifteen percent. Uh, FY twenty-three fund balance was sixteen point two nine, uh, and project fund balance was eighteen point four seven. Uh, we refer you to page sixteen of the budget book for the detail uh on the uh general fund uh balance policy. And the policy outlines the permissible uses of fund balance in excess of seventeen percent, which we're not at currently. Uh, there were some other questions about uh that really relate more to CNR that we could go over later, but the. So I guess generally speaking, with respect to capital, the question uh was, you know, why are we seeing so many? And as the Board of Finance put up a slide uh during their meeting with the Board of Ed uh recently, that showed us well above the guidance line. Uh, so again, you know, our answer to that is, we, we're respectful of the guidance, obviously, and, and uh, our debt service costs have gone up over a million dollars this year. So we're all, I think, on the same page when it comes to uh, uh, conservatively picking projects and, and being uh well aware of what the town can afford. But for today's workshop, Wendy, we thought we would include this.
So, so I, let's, I think it would be good to go down the list.
Yeah.
And um, just so, there are some questions in here about the PAC, which we can talk about as we go through. But like, what is the, you know, operating cost impact if, if we do this project? Would be something we'd need to know in, in the future years. The other item was actually when would, would this start? We're, it says we're funding it in twenty four, twenty five, but that they're not gonna start till twenty five. So I'm gonna stop there, I'm gonna open it up. I have a lot of questions on this, but I'd like to open it up to the board um for questions on the PAC. We're being asked to fund um five hundred thousand dollars, correct, out of?
Correct.
Out of reserves.
Correct.
Um, so we, we know that, where's, the reserves are gonna be, have, be used elsewhere. Um, and I'd like to turn it over to, to my colleagues to ask some questions, if you wanna, if you want.
Um, well, I guess, um, my question is, why would we fund now and not after um the other five hundred thousand is raised?
Great question.
And what um ideas do they have in place to raise them funding?
Yep. Obviously there, the, the, the majority of this uh is, uh, let's back up. Three hundred fifty thousand was appropriated previously, we've got that. You're being asked to fund an additional five hundred, that would be eight fifty. Uh, I believe everybody's aware that uh, uh, the town for this project received, that or is receiving the nine hundred thousand dollar grant from the state on this. Uh, there were discussions previously uh with the state rep and others about, uh, you know, the timing when that, when those monies would have to be uh used. And that was a subject of discussion that I think resulted in, I think the answer was, we're not at risk of losing the grant uh in, in year one, but might be in year two or three. But uh, to the specific question, what we, what we hope to accomplish is a, a stronger public-private partnership, if you will. We realize that the entire project isn't funded. However, because they have to raise money from their donors, their donors, this is just one aspect of the answer. Their donors rightly say, what skin does the town have in the game? And, and what, what is the town willing to do? By your approving the five hundred thousand, you are greatly bolstering their ability to fundraise. So before the budget, before my preliminary budget was released, we had some discussions individually and among staff about this. And it's really a question, as Heather points to, of what goes first, the, the cart or the horse, right? Uh, we believe that they have to do uh an extraordinary job of fundraising to get us to, to the goal line uh at, because they're short uh roughly another half a million dollars that is, is currently unfunded. But the quick answer is the five hundred thousand that you're being asked to approve in this budget makes it much more possible for them to raise that money. I had a conversation with their uh board president just a couple of days ago on this point. Uh, and their, their board's finance committee authorized him to let us know that they now believe that with our help, they can raise that. They don't know how quickly they can raise it. And so if you approve the five hundred thousand, we, we will continue to do our work internally at the staff level and with their board of directors to make sure that this is, that, that they can reach that, that promised land. Uh, it's kind of like what we're being asked to do uh with the SVAA or with the Main Street Partnership. We don't have the, the full picture of how the funds are raised. We know without this five hundred thousand, it, it, it's not gonna happen. Uh, we know that if we were to ask you to put more money on the table, we would simply be uh making it unnecessary for them to go and raise their funds, right? So we're asking for a reasonable amount of money that would allow us to work with them, improve their fundraising and, and take a more collaborative approach. I think there are a couple of, uh, they have identified potentially one or two uh. I think there are a couple of, uh, they have identified potentially one or two, uh, high value funders uh, that are looking to see what the town does with, with the five hundred and then would come forward with their money. So I, I, I hate to answer a question with a question, but if we don't fund this, are, uh, we're essentially saying that the project doesn't count.
Can I, can I just interrupt one clarification?
Yeah.
Um, based on the, the two point seven, right? Um, if, if we put in a five hundred K, there's still a million dollar gap. And there was four hundred that they had said prior, when we met at the, um, tribe board meeting, that they could get. So we're basically saying there's another six hundred K that needs to be fundraised.
It's roughly five hundred now.
To fundraise.
Correct.
On top of the four hundred that they've already designated, correct?
Correct, because they already have that.
Okay, cuz I wasn't sure if that was held or if that was still T B D.
Right. And my understanding is a rough numbers of the four hundred, they spent about a hun- of the four hundred that they had, they spent about a hundred on design and, and plans and so forth. And they've got actually three hundred or thereabouts in cash. And that's why, you're right, my number of, of roughly four, five hundred thousand, let's say it's five hundred, is the shortfall. It's the shortfall between our three fifty, the nine hundred thousand dollar grant, the five hundred you're being asked to fund now, the four hundred that they previously committed to. And there was, I mean, just for the record, there was some, I think, understanding on the town side that, you know, they could raise the full amount and that they would do a capital campaign. And then that's what the discussions have been with them. Uh, you know, leading up to my, uh, submission of the preliminary budget. So the quick answer, not a, not a quick answer, but the answer is, Heather, the five hundred makes it possible to get us to where we need to be with, with their fundraising.
So, say, we fund this, they raise the funds, how accurate is that number? So next year, we, we all the time get back with projects of, oh, you know, that now this year, the bid is, has changed. Um, you know, are there bids in place or is this two point seven truly accurate or? I know you get to.
I, I defer to that.
I feel like it's been trying to use the.
I saw.
I think Tom, Tom needs to step forward on this one.
That's an answer. Yeah, Tom, you should be sitting up here for this.
Not up here, Tom.
You too.
It's, uh.
Yeah, really.
All very good questions.
This is all very legendary, right?
It is.
We'll hit you on microphone that's there.
I don't know anything about meta. I had nothing to do with social media.
We're blaming you for that.
It is backwards, but that's okay.
Oh, yeah.
The, the tablecloth is backwards, so you're, you don't have a leg right now.
That's great.
I'm turning around.
You're just trying to throw me off at every wave of.
Exactly.
Uh, so, so in terms of the cost estimate on the Performing Arts Center, um, all cost estimating right now has been difficult. We, we are seeing a combination of things. Um, ever since COVID, it, it's not just the, the COVID inflation and what that did. Because of all of the state and federal funding that has hit the construction industry, contractors are hard to find. Um, contractors are able to pick and choose their projects more than they ever have before. And especially any project with risk, they have the ability to inflate that number. What we did to try to protect, um, the town is we spent five thousand dollars to hire a professional cost estimating firm to review the drawings once they were done. And that's how we came up with the two point eight million dollar number. So it's much better vetted than most of our numbers, but as we project out into the future, there becomes a risk of change.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, Tom, yes, so.
So it's like a kind of, uh, comment question, um, thing, because I think it's important, especially for those that are watching, to remember that this is a, this is a town-owned property that we are leasing from them. And I think a, a big important piece of this, if we move this forward, would be, um, a, a new agreement that we have with the P A C, because, um, although they are, would be beneficiary for a large part of it, there has to be parts of it that we take as a town and have utilization for, uh, more than we have now. And, and building out these parts, you know, the, the, the office space and, and rehearsal space and, and indoor bathrooms, which would benefit a lot of people in the town, but I think, um, you know, they, they can't be the sole beneficiaries as well as potentially renegotiate. But to that point, that maybe part of that agreement is when there are increases in costs, you know, who's going to be on the hook for those increases? Is it gonna be moving on them to raise the additional funds if costs go up? Or is it something that they're gonna be looking to come back to the town to, to fund and have an increase for? So I know you don't have the answer to that necessarily, but it's, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, so in, in the unlikely event that there are costs overruns or there's increases in costs, it does bring back who's at risk.
Mm-hmm.
Not to speak for Mark, but I believe the town would be at risk for that. Um, the one piece with the fundraising that, um, you just mentioned is that four hundred thousand. And I just wanna make sure, when, when we ran our numbers to get, to get here, we're looking at four hundred thousand dollars of new, um, money from the Performing Arts Center, not taking into account the hundred thousand dollars they invested into the plans. So just wanna make sure we're not double counting that hundred thousand.
Isn't there like a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar cushion in the estimate?
There, there is a contingency in the cost estimate. Um, and that's for all of the things that can go wrong, will go wrong, sometimes during construction. Um, for example, when we recently built the parking lot down there, it should, should have been a very straightforward project. And as we went through the design, um, there were test pits done to make sure that we knew what the soils were. As they began to dig, they found buried stumps, logs, car parts, just an array of materials that did not belong under a parking lot that's gonna serve the town for the next quarter century. So we ended up using that contingency to make up for that. Same thing as we get into this, the challenge is, this is not a new building on a clean site. This is an addition to an existing building. And as buildings go, this is an architectural building with unique slopes and roofs and, and things that, that come into play. It's not like we're adding on to a Home Depot or a, uh, everyday pop-up, um, building. So some of the costs also include, you know, the roof down there is twenty-five years old on the existing building. So as we looked at the design of this, you can't build a new addition and attach it to a twenty-five-year-old roof. So the existing structure gets a level of rehab within this.
Okay, I, I just wanna ask, you just, I, I just wanted to read, just, um, I'm looking at documents that we received from the PAC. Um, so we're saying they have a half a million dollar donation. Um, Y O U, I guess, right? I guess, to say it that way. And in the, and there's still that other five hundred, that four hundred. And so, Tom, I was just was gonna read the, the, what they committed to in that four hundred something was the shovel-ready architecture plans. Is that's what you just asked about, correct?
Yeah.
So they already included that in the money that they said was part of the four hundred. Um, grants received and restricted is one twenty. I'm just showing that they, this is what they committed to that four hundred-ish, right? And then two hundred of their reserves, um, to be subject to board approval. So those are what's in there to make up that other half in addition to the donations required, correct? And then the other thing I just wanna point out too, excuse me, is, is, um, there's also, um, we learned there's an operating component on the other side to make sure that they can function and run the facility, right, that they're gonna have to raise too. And I don't know if that changes their capital.
Uh, right, it, um, however the agreement is structured moving forward, you're gonna go from a facility that runs a seasonal facility to a year-round facility.
Yeah.
And there are a lot of additional things that would have to come on with that new maintenance agreement. Uh, you're looking at something they have not have to done, do in the past, which is pay for heating.
Hmm.
Snow removal, who's going to do the snow removal right around the building?
Right.
Um, who's going to be responsible for maintaining those restrooms? All of those details add up, and I think it's part of the conversation to make sure the Performing Arts Center and the town have a clear understanding of how we're gonna go forward with those routine operating costs.
And, and some of us have been here, we've been talking about this for probably three years already, um, you know. And, and, um, you know, there always was, if there was skin in the game, they'd be able to raise the money. Um, and the question on the operating costs and things like that, I would assume would be part of the agreement, right? And then back to Heather's question, um, if we're, we're, if, you know, we decide to move forward on this, we're, we're totally dependent on this fundraising piece. And if we approve that, these are questions maybe for the finance people, if we approve it and we need those donations, um, what happens if they, they can't do it? Like, are, did you say that we're, would we end up being on the hook for that? Or we would just, like, what if we're, like, do we have, here's a question. In order to be shovel-ready, which says, um, next fall, twenty twenty-five, do we need to have the, all the money in hand?
Yes.
Okay, so, so if, okay, so that would be part of the commitment is that we have that money because we don't wanna start digging and then find out that they can't meet the, the funds, correct?
Correct.
So that would be, that would be a commitment to sign on the dotted line from the PAC, correct? I, I'm sure others have comments, questions, we'll get, we're gonna circle back to these, these when we get into the looking at numbers and decision points, but I just seeing if people have.
I have one more question.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so when we look at our town assets, um, you know, we've had discussions in the past before that some of our assets, when they're not in use for, um, maybe their particular function, uh, you know, are they being used as some sort of revenue stream for our town? And, um, I'm just wondering, with this space, do we have any sort of idea or understanding of how often this asset will be in use, what percentage of the time, and is there a revenue stream estimate that we forget from rent lease? Or, um, use of the building, that office space?
I think those are good questions. I think really that they are questions for the Performing Arts Center. I know they have thoughts of doing year-round, uh, activities in the new space, and I think they have some excitement about that, and I'm sure they'll generate revenue. But that revenue isn't going to offset that increased maintenance charge.
Yeah, and I actually asked Tom, put you on the spot, Tom, um, Tversky, just, you know, are there, are there activities that works in rec might wanna expand to and may not have the right space or things like that? You know, and are there things in, when we do this agreement that they might wanna ask for in there? Just throwing, throwing that out there.
Yeah, just to quickly answer that, just to review the design of that building, there's nothing, you know, outs- outside of the stage or anything backstage indoors. There's nothing there that I couldn't do at Eno Hall or the, or the Apple Barn or Scout Hall. It, those, those rooms aren't big enough and that they are geared towards storage and conference tables and things like that. It's not set up for tumbling classes and, and that kind of thing. Or the lot, you know, the library space and would, would work as well. It's just, that's not a, a rev- necessarily a revenue stream for us.
Yeah, I should be criticized.
You know, if you're looking at revenue streams, then, you know, they're opening up two, uh, uh, additional activities, which again, they're gonna be competing with, with programs that we're running potentially or the libraries running or, or social services, new services is gonna be running. So potentially you're taking, there's a, there's a possible loss of revenue. I don't wanna look at negatively, but there's possible loss of revenue. We're splitting the pie, uh, Department of Continuing Education is also doing programs similar to what the three of us are doing as well. What you, what you could do is their contract right now only pays the town roughly twenty-five hundred dollars a year in rent. You could tie future programming to, to a rental increase, or obviously if they're gonna be using the building year-round, there should be some, some additional renting paid or revenue coming into the town that way. I don't know that it's gonna offset all the expenses that, right now, the rent doesn't cover the expenses we're, we're incurring now with the, with the property for irrigating the lawn and mowing it and all that kind of stuff, that basically sustains their ability to do performances during the summer. Mulch, things like that. So, I mean, certainly that contract would have to be, your board would have to look at that, the town manager's office would have to look at that and revise that. If you're looking to get to a more break even, at least a break even amount on what they're, what the activity is down there. But if you're looking to do, to gain revenue by, from that backstage build-out, I think that's, uh, probably a reach on our side.
Well, I do wonder if, um, I think when we renegotiate this agreement, I think there's, there needs to be some things in there that, uh, do have a greater benefit to the town if we're gonna do this space. For example, I mean, you have other nonprofit organizations potentially looking to use it or other towns or dance studios wanting to use it for whatever. And, and is that revenue potentially that the town should receive rather than the P A C? Or does it all go to the P A C? And, and do we have a, a, a shared agreement in that? And I, I think that's a big part of the agreement moving forward. I mean, um, I'll, I'll speak freely that from another nonprofit arts organization, we pay far more to the town as a nonprofit organization, making far less money than they do to utilize town space. Um, and, and so, just gonna throw that out there. Um, uh, I'm not saying looking for that, but I mean, I think that we need to make it, uh, they might even be happy with my comment, but a little bit more equitable to the town as well.
And I, and I think they, it couldn't agree more. I think that's why I use the term, you know, public-private, you know, they're nonprofits. But it's a, it's a, it's that type of relationship building that, you know, it, it isn't solely about revenue, of course, but that's a component. Uh, but clearly, there, there, there needs to be a broader agreement that addresses all of the concerns. Uh, as I mentioned, when I presented the preliminary budget, we didn't have the time to negotiate all of these various things. There's a few of them that we'll be talking about today, uh, but needed to get the placeholder funding into the budget. But there's a clear understanding in my office and amongst staff that we need to address those issues. And if the funding is approved, that's, that's what we will do. And again, the dispersal of, of this, if you approve it, is based on the total being reached. Uh, so it's, 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 uh, uh, unless you planned on using that five hundred, which is currently is coming from capital reserves, unless you planned on using that five hundred somewhere else, we'd recommend that you fund it so that we can have those conversations. Uh, and, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll be inviting members of the Board of Selectmen, uh, you know, maybe two or three of you who have an interest in working with us to carve that relationship, uh, out, uh, to, to participate in those discussions once we get through the budget process.
I, I just have a couple of positive things to say about the PAC, just cuz we've been like, you know, ripping the numbers apart. Um, well, the first thing I would say is it would have to go to referendum, so it will be up to the public to decide if they wanna include this because of the cost amount. Um, but, um, I, that's true, correct, you guys? That's, yeah, okay. Um, the other thing is, we've, we've, we've made a case over the last two, two, three years, first with John Hampton as a state rep to get state funding, and we were able, we made that argument, and we made that argument with key people from the PAC, from town staff again this year. And, um, we did get, uh, we made the argument to get nine hundred thousand, not two point one, which I was hoping for, but nine hundred thousand. I will say, you know, I know there's, there's, there's conversations of how much it brings to town, but it does put us on the map as far as people coming to Simsbury and seeing what a great community we have downtown, that we have this great resource. Um, whether they shop before or after or not, they know Simsbury. I've run in, I don't know why I'm so phlegmy, sorry. I've run into lots of people, um, you know, that I've met, I used to work with, that happened to be at these performances, and they're like, I've never been to Simsbury, blah, blah, blah. And also the commitment from the Harf- Hartford Symphony Orchestra. I'm like, that's a really good partnership. I, I know they don't, I don't know what they give us for money, if anything, but they, they do come to town and they bring all their people with them to town, and, um, the, the residents and other populations seem to enjoy that. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, I mean, they call it their summer home, so that's, and that's promotional right on the Hartford Symphony Orchestra website. Um, and I think if we can, you capitalize on the, um, um, economic development part of the expansion and how it would help, as Wendy points out, um, bring things to the town, it's a selling point, um, you know, and again, I think with the build-out, you have the availability to have more opportunities even for town usage i- in the space. Um, and building out that building, I mean, again, just even having indoor bathrooms, to me, it's like a huge, a huge positive.
Wait, they're only used though for parks and rec. They're not used for, right, they're gonna only be used, but that's, that is an addition.
Yes.
Three, two, two years ago, two years ago?
Uh, tw- twenty, twenty-three.
And.
Big, big Tom, my question for you actually, uh, have we looked to see, so as we talk about getting additional revenue from, like, having additional events there? Um, shifting sporting events, because I know the town uses those fields for, uh, our activities. Um, this may have a ripple effect that we may, we may need some additional sports, sporting fields. Um, have you looked to see how we, how we shift all of it around if you, if you lost this field and, and, uh?
Oh, so you lose the field, yeah, it puts us in a more of a crunch. We've already, since, since COVID, we've, it's, it's already become more difficult to schedule, uh, for the youth lacrosse organizations who traditionally have used that field from April to June. Um, as the season has expanded, the, the Performing Arts Center season, it's expanded outward from June toward April, toward April first. It has become more difficult, because they have priority use, so it's become more difficult for the lacrosse groups to schedule their games and practices down there because they're subject to that event calendar. So typically, when are our events gonna take place? They're gonna take place on Fridays and Saturdays or Sundays, cuz that's when they draw the most people. Well, that's when, you know, ideally, the lacrosse games would be taking place. So they, they've gotten displaced to some extent. Um, so it's made it more difficult on their, on their scheduling. And for weeknight practices, uh, for games that they might have had scheduled, you know, we've, we've seen an increase in, uh, out of, out of town schools coming in to do their band concerts outdoors because of, because of COVID. So there was a rehearsal in a, in a concert night for like Conard, West, uh, Conard and Hall, I think were out here. Um, some other schools were doing their outdoor dance rehearsals. So lacrosse has, lacrosse has been cut short. Uh, they had to utilize other fields or scramble at the last second or avoid rain dates on the count, you know, holds for rain dates that, that were there for PAC events and whatnot. We've started to make it work, the last, last year worked out better. We start, we were really in contact with the, uh, Performing Arts Center Executive Director and the Director of the Youth Lacrosse Organization, trying to get everybody on the same page, trying to get them to communicate about what their needs are as far as dates and things like that. Was it a little better? It was a little better, but if we, if they were to expand that season, then those fields come offline, there's really nowhere to put girls across at this point. They're already, we have three fields down there. They'd be crunched, it'd be really tight to get those fields. There's really nowhere to put girls across at this point. They're already, we have three fields down there, they'd be crunched, it'd be really tight to get those fields somewhere else. It's also some of the nicest turf in town and and you know, it's nice to use it as use it as athletic fields. Conversely, in the fall, soccer's gotten crunched, um uh gotten crunched as well. So if the fall season were to be expanded, they, you know, they would be, potentially lose two to three fields as well, um.
So there's some unintended consequences.
Correct.
I think that we should just be sure that we get out there that if we do expand this, it can affect, you know, the the shape.
Yeah, we're at the tipping point now. I mean, I I I said that a few weeks, a few times to your board. We're at the tipping point of where we are with with athletic fields. If you take potentially three fields off in the spring and three fields off in the fall permanently. Now now we're really hurting, now we're really scrambling. Um if we stay about where we are now, it's it's manageable, it's not great, it's manageable. But we if they, you know, go to thirty events instead of fifteen events in those seasons, then then we're really.
Tom, could you tell us what the financial impact would be of losing the ability to use those fields? Like, how would it affect us? Do you have a estimate?
It's not a financial, I mean, you're you're basically hurting the the course. We don't derive any revenue other than play, we do get a a small.
Right.
Player use fee per season that goes toward field maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
But you you'd be restricting the ability for kid, you know, we all want kids to be active and things like that.
Right, right.
You know, eventually they'd have to start capping numbers. Soccer would have to cap numbers at a certain age level, you know, lacrosse would have to do the same thing. Cuz there's just nowhere else to put those, put those people in town right now.
I just didn't know if there was like a an actual financial impact one way or the other to.
Uh yeah. Yeah, I mean, it'd be hard, I mean, not not a operating, necessarily operating impact on us. We're gonna have to mow that grass. Either way, we may not have to line those three fields. That's 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 some savings on our side, but. We just don't have those other, we we don't have the ability to move them to another place right now. They're they're, we're already at at max capacity. We caught uh.
Mm-hmm.
Henry James, things like that. In the high school, you can't get a youth group, it's hard to get youth groups on that because they're, they've got thirty-two varsity teams that they're trying to pick up right now.
Okay, thanks. Thanks.
And and Wendy, you asked if we could uh just jot down decision points. Do you wanna make a decision on 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 this and?
I was just thinking, I was just.
拉 this one off the list.
Yeah, I was trying to decide, I was gonna say like, um you know, A, if we have unanimous consent, which I learned at the Board of Finance meeting the other night. Um if no one's objecting, we can kind of put this, you know, on the docket. If we do have some people that might object to this, we can take a vote now. Or we can hold it till the end of um Capitol. Um I can't remember how we've done it in the past, so.
I I think on this one, I might might be a different answer as we go down the list, but with this one, because the proposal is to use a a capital reserves, it'd probably be better.
Right. Wanna know now.
If we did it now, because then then, cuz obviously it would would affect what other cuts, if any, the the board wants to make, so.
Yeah.
You've got a few big issues and we did just spend some time on it, so.
Okay, um so I I'm gonna ask, do we wanna take a, is there anybody up here that objects or do we have unanimous consent to move this forward?
To keep it on?
To keep it on.
I I'm not convinced that they have the ability to raise the money that they've indicated here.
Okay.
Um everything that I've been told so far says that, yeah, we can raise it. There's a huge difference between a conversation and a commitment, and that's a check. Um and I haven't seen any, um you know, draft appeals or um a a case for support. Uh that they've been able to raise that revenue, and I feel like the only reason why we're getting this downward pressure to add this this year. Is because of the state bonding authority that we we got, which is excellent. That's an excellent achievement.
Mm-hmm.
But I feel like that's the only pressure that we have right now to put this on our agenda, and I'm disappointed to hear that there were all these conversations in previous years. About soliciting that support from our state representative and our state senator to get that bonding support. And there hasn't been enough work on the other side to ensure that we're gonna actually be able to raise the funding necessary from SIMPAC. Uh to do to do their portion. And so for me to um say to the taxpayer that we not only want your support on this project now. But there could be cost overruns in the future and you may end up holding the bag in the end, it makes me very uncomfortable. If we put this forward so that the voters can vote at the budget, you know, with the budget referendum, then that's fine with me, I'll I'll be happy to go along with it. But as far as what I feel like is my fiduciary responsibility here, I feel like we are asking the taxpayers to fund this entire project. And I honestly, also, while I love going down there for all the concerts and I have amazing memories with my family uh down there, I'm not convinced that this project is even necessary right now. So that's where I sit, unfortunately.
Okay. Um okay, so I guess that's, um so I'm gonna ask, I I guess since we we have people that disagree with us. Um I'm gonna ask for a motion um to approve the capital reserve funding of five hundred thousand dollars for the Performing Arts Center. With the condition that we have a firm commitment from the PAC for the additional fundraising and have that in place before we. We dig. Um and that, you know, it goes to referendum and that we also have the agreement on. Um in place on whether there's a revenue stream, what town resources are impacted. Um and make sure that the cost estimate is firm to move this forward. Additionally, I'm throwing this in, is that we have town capacity to work on this, right? In addition to all the other projects that we have. Um and I'm gonna put that out there as a motion, if somebody wants to move that.
So.
Is there a second for that? Okay, um all those in favor of moving that forward, say aye.
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 Voted for.
Okay, so that.
Is that five one?
I voted for.
Six oh.
Okay, so you are.
Voted for.
Six oh six oh?
Oh, okay.
Just so you, just procedurally, you're going to vote on every single capital project with your with your budget motions on Monday, so you don't have to necessarily do that with every project.
Yeah. Later. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, well, I thought Kevin, I I was gonna get just a consent from the board, so we basically voted for it, but we have consent to move forward.
Yeah.
So let's, we can go that way.
Alright.
Um alright. So now we're moving on to um the next item on here, right, you is the pool, is a. Memorial Pool Design ABA Splash Pad. Um that's under Parks and Rec.
Tom, who who wants that? Anybody want?
I don't think they want it.
All the plans, come on. More times here.
Alright, hopefully you had a chance to look at the the packet I sent out yesterday, just to try to familiarize yourself with what the the um.
Yes, I think you guys.
The project is or what what it could be. Uh Memorial Pool was built in the nineteen fifties. There hasn't been a bunch of many, very many renovations since then. It's. The shell of the pool is in rough shape, the concrete decking's in rough shape, the bathhouse, uh it needs a roof and it's not, um it's. The interior, to be honest with you, I don't know if it's up to code, if we do any renovations, it's gonna have to be brought up to code. Um it is currently used for day camp swim lessons, day camp swimming and swim lessons right now. Um and we do two sessions of public, um uh we do two periods of after-work swim lessons over there for the public. Monday through Friday, um we do, we open up the waiting pool Monday through Saturday from nine to eleven uh for the public as well. But the the town's faced with a decision. That facility is, as I just said, it's in it's in disrepair. Um not for lack of what we can do with the staff, there's just, you know, it's just, there hasn't been any money allotted to that uh facility in probably three decades. The uh if you want to continue to operate it as a pool, you're probably looking at a two two million plus renovation to continue to have that community pool over there. Um that includes a bathhouse renovation as well. Um we think the better option, based on uh what we, what the trend in the industry is, um trend nationwide. What the Parks and Open Space Master Plan, um soliciting input from our community. And the the it was identified as an ideal location to renovate that facility as a splash pad. Um renovate the bathhouse so it can also be used as public restrooms for that. Uh we have a high need for public restrooms in town, uh indoor public restrooms. Um there are no public restrooms on that upper level of Memorial Park up there, and there's one, two, three, five fields up there. Um so from from that perspective, renovate that building, we're able to section it off and allow those those bathrooms to be used. In the spring and spring, summer and fall for their purposes as well. Um I have spoken to the youth sport groups, they would help. Um cover the maintenance costs when their when their teams are using it, when their leagues are using those bathrooms, so that wouldn't be a burden on the town. Uh we would be responsible for when, obviously, when the splash pad is open for maintenance, those restrooms. Um a splash pad is much cheaper to run operationally and and with staffing than a pool is, significantly so. Um the the demo of the pool and the construction of the splash pad would be cheaper than the pool renovation. I can tell you what, I mean, we think the best plan right now is to is to spend that hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um have the building and the site assessed for the splash pad, get a design of the splash pad and the new building. Um something that we can then take to the vote, take to our uh voters through referendum or into your boards next year. Um with an accurate, hopefully an accurate cost estimate as well. Um the longer we put this project off, I mean, like Tom's been saying. Things are just gonna get more expensive, so we're just kicking that can down the road. Eventually, we're gonna have to do something with the pool, whether it's. Renovate a pool, build a splash pad or close it. Yeah, we have three options on the table. Um we can get through another year, you know, patching here and there. We're spending a lot of money on water because that shell does leak. So where would you like to start?
I'll open up for questions. I have my own, but I will like to um open it up to people.
Do you do you envision this something that um Central School could benefit from? Like so, if you were to have a a, I don't know, adventure day or whatever, like a day that they, you know, I don't know, field day. You could, they they could use it for.
Yeah, actually, that's a great idea. Um a lot of the, some of the schools rent Simsbury Farms um for end of this, end of the year pool parties. The splash pad, because you don't have to, you know, the operational costs are lower, we could open that splash pad Memorial Day weekend. Which we don't, aren't able to open up Simsbury Farms, the water's really cold up there. Splash pad, you know, the water's gonna be recirculated in a tank. Generally, it's gonna be warmer, but yes, you could do a field day at when we're going, every school can have a school at Memorial Park.
Yeah, I was gonna say, every school.
Um that's a great idea. So yeah, if if that's something they would like to do, we could make that happen, yeah.
If I could just add that that he he's absolutely right with respect to the national trend converting old pools, right, so.
Yeah.
Just did a pool house uh construction in Poughkeepsie using ARPA money. Budgeted it a million and a half, came in at over three and a half. Uh so, you know, when you've got a pool that's gonna need some significant work, uh you know, you're talking about a lot of money.
Yes.
How many, um how many visitors or residents do you anticipate being there? Um per season, would you have, you know, time slots, people sign up for, it's just a, I'm sorry?
Thousands. Thousands.
Because I just kinda look at a little bit of, right now, what are we spending cost per guest versus what cost per guest would be with a splash pad?
We're we're charging five dollars to use a waiting pool right now, and we don't get a lot. I mean, it's it's a few few families from the neighborhood who go up there um with their with their children who use the waiting pool. The day camp this year will have a hundred and ten kids in, uh some weeks a hundred and twenty when our board of ed uh friends are there as well. Um and they're generally gonna be there from one to three P M. And then they leave, some thirty kids stay, thirty camp kids stay for swim lessons for forty-five minutes to an hour, and then two sessions of public. Uh lessons go out, go on after that till till just the five, five-thirty in the afternoon. Um we rarely open that up for public swim unless there's a heat wave. That's pretty much been the only time we've done it the last few years, just to offset the crowding at Simsbury Farms or offer. You know, if we had previously scheduled a swim meet at Simsbury Farms, we'll open up that pool on a hot on a hot day to keep people, you know, give them an opportunity to cool off. Um I would think that the the splash pad in Simsbury is gonna be a very, very popular amenity. It's centrally located to downtown. No matter where you live in town or coming from out of town, you're gonna be coming through the center of town, coming through ten, um coming from one eighty-five or three fifteen. Uh you're gonna be coming into the center of town, you're gonna go by the gas station, you're gonna go by the grocery stores, you're gonna go by grassroots and get ice cream before or after with your with your kids. Uh so it's an, it's something that's gonna help the town economically, I believe. It's also, uh unlike some other projects, there is a possibility of a revenue stream here that's gonna offset or even make the town some money. Um currently, that pool's not making the town, making the town any money. If we're spending far more on 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 the use of the pool than than. On the operation of the pool than we're bringing in in revenue. Um the splash pad, some towns choose choose to. Just open it up and let people go, other towns choose to have a small admission fee. It, I would recommend that we do the small admission fee that would pay for the one gate attendant, we would need the staff there. It would also help pay for the electricity and the water used at the splash pad. I would charge more for non-residents because I think there's so few of these amenities in areas. Canton's opening up one this summer, Farmington's gonna open up theirs next summer. Um but you know, East Granby, Granby, uh Windsor doesn't, I don't think, doesn't have one at this point, I don't think. Um people are gonna, people, if you build it, they will come, and if you want, if you wanna allow non-residents, I would charge them more to use that. Um again, we'll have a gate attendant there who can take that money or people can buy a season pass or whatever. Uh but it would produce revenue for the town and I, and being so popular, I think we would have, I mean, when I say thousands of guests, I think we could do thousands of guests. Two hundred, two hundred people a day, easy. Five days a week, there's a thousand, times a ten to twelve week season, possibly fourteen if we start at Memorial Day and keep it open to later.
Can I actually get the windows back to next year, sorry.
Anybody else, anybody else like one?
Um. Sorry, sorry to answer, um pardon my question, cuz I was gonna ask, I know you had mentioned other towns, so you know that Canton and Farmington are opening this summer?
No, uh Farmington just just uh ordered their bid this, actually, this week they're gonna order their bid.
Okay.
Their anticipated opening date is next year. Canton is opening theirs at Millwoods Park this summer, this summer.
Do you know what they're charging?
I do not.
Or or if they're charging?
Uh Canton's is included in the pool admission to Millwoods.
Okay, so theirs is at their pool location, so this, it wouldn't be a sort of thing.
Correct.
Um and then my other question, which you may not have the answer for, but out of the three options, you have renovate it to splash pad. Or um renovate the current existing or close it. What is the cost of closing it and what would be the proposed option if you decide to, we decide to close that pool altogether because it's. Uh you know, cost too much to maintain, um cost too much to renovate, we close it, potentially make it into fields or whatever else. Do you know the cost of that?
When you're not gonna build it as field, you knock down the building and fill in the pool, would you say?
Right.
Small money.
Small money. And then what would we do with the, just sit there?
Well, if if you demolished it, it would just become land.
Yeah, I mean, you could put a playground over the over the top of the site eventually or something like that, um.
Right.
But you're still, then you'd have to, you know, le- like level everything out, still keep a fence around it because you have a hill on the back.
Right. Right, right, right.
But you, one of the benefits of having, of of doing something in that site, we have all the infrastructure, we have all the utilities we need, we have the shell of a bathhouse that we can.
Right.
You know, hopefully reuse those those four concrete walls. Um we have the ADA accessible sidewalk going up to the building at this point. Uh and we have a great parking lot that's not being used during the summer days for anything else. Baseball games and and softball games typically take place at night. So we have that nice big parking lot that we can use for this place. We don't have to shoehorn it in anywhere else in town.
Could you rent it out to um groups?
Potentially, that's something we'd like to, you know, if we wanted to do that, we could explore that. We rent a lot of things in town.
Okay.
It's not something I thought of at this point, I mean, we. You know, we wanna make it as as accessible to our public as possible. And then, you know, the thought was with the day camp.
Right.
Um we'd still like to continue to use Central School as the home, as the home base for for uh the day camp. What we could either do is block off uh two hours in the afternoon for them to come over and they stay, or we can bring them over in groups throughout the day. So that the impact of, you know, we're not dumping a hundred and ten kids in when the public's there, so there's a couple of ways we could explore that. Um but, you know, rental is a possibility, but if we do rent it, we're taking it offline. I mean, ideally, we wanna rent at the end of the day, we're renting for birthday parties or. Or beginning of the day or end of the day when it's not gonna be affecting the majority of our residents who would like to use it.
Excuse me, that was that was really rude, sorry. I feel, I I know I'm on camera, but I also feel like we're just in this room, so sorry to the viewing audience. Um one question I have is, so the way it's, just the way it's funded, right, it's it's looking for bonding of the one fifty, is that true?
I believe that's, yeah, that's how they they put it in.
So I I, if if and when we move forward on that, I don't, is that what we, do we normally bond for the design work of something or do we normally pay out of reserves for design work? Because it's not a done deal.
I'll defer to the experts.
Until we pay for the construction costs.
Yeah, I, yeah, if you don't mind, but I'll just start by saying, historically, what we've done is we've combined the design and construction um into one. Number um on the capital plan and then just bonded for the entire.
Okay.
Plus the whole thing is bonding. We're trying to move more towards this um concept of funding the design first. Um because as you noted, um you know, the way the cost estimates work work these days, you know, if there's a lag, we might not have a good number. Um so that's sort of a better practice. Um so I don't know functionally how, you know, how we would do that if it's such a small amount for the design, but we would still bond for it, right?
Okay, yeah, just cuz I I, and I maybe I'm remembering correctly, when we did the Flower Bridge, we did a three hundred split out. Like, did, I I don't know if we use, I think we use ARPA cash for that, right, in that frame, because obviously then we end up somewhere else. Um so I don't know, that's just one thing to put out there. We had to use some cash skin in the game to do this. Um I have a couple of questions for Tom.
Yeah, can I just add one, one more thing before I get too far down the line on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There is a chance that on the backside of this, that the the construction phase could be could be uh funded partly through the Steve Grant program.
France.
Farmington did get money for their project. They're actually building pickleball courts and splash pad with with the Steve Grant. Um we can get a match, um it's it's up to five hundred thousand, I put it in the packet. Um this is a project based on what's in their information packet that would qualify for that. They don't cover design, they won't match design costs or cover design costs, but we would be past that at that point. Um so there is a possibility, you know, when I know, I think our second number is nine hundred fifty thousand, that number could be, you know, offset somewhat by by that Steve Grant.
Okay, a couple of things I I I just wanna ask. So I, you guys, I know you keep referring that this is in the twenty twenty master plan.
Yes, and it's been in the capital plan for three years now.
Okay, thank you. But um I did wanna mention, there are other things in the master plan um that are also not on. Okay, thank you. But um I did wanna mention, there are other things in the master plan um that are also not on here, including the paddle ball, paddle court resurfacing or refinishing. I think there's something in from the mess, I you sent all those slides.
That would be C N does uh the, are the platform tennis, you mean?
Yeah, C N R.
That would, the platform tennis, we we did a renovation, what Orlando, three years, four years ago?
Okay.
Four years ago, and but that would be C N R, that'd be small potatoes.
Okay.
Um tennis court resurfacing is in the in the capital, it might be in the capital plan for years now.
Okay.
The Simsbury Farms courts are cracked.
Okay.
Um they were last built in two thousand fifteen sixteen, I believe, and there was problems when during the rebuild there. Um again, this is why we're building concrete, uh post-etching concrete courts in Terracotta, because in New England, the climate, things things asphalt breaks.
Actually.
And that, the way that court is crowned, it it's basically like a saltine cracker breaking along the dotted lines. Uh we did put in for for um crack filling money last year, which wasn't approved, um so that those are gonna get, those are gonna get worse, and those courts are gonna fail sooner than later. Um so if we want tennis and pickleball courts at Simsbury Farms, eventually, we're gonna have to rebuild those courts. That's the request I put in this year, but but it's not for this year, it's the plan.
And and I I might have read that wrong. I was reading all the stuff that you sent us yesterday um from the master plan. And I thought I just saw something in there about um.
We, a couple few years ago, we re- we resurfaced, we repainted, but that doesn't, you know, that wasn't crack filling or or repairing asphalt at that point.
Okay, so thanks. But the other question I had, and I asked you this the other day when I, is um we have the um skate park. And that also says that needs renovation.
It does.
Right? And that is used and you, we are using that for programming. I guess my point here is, and I think you, He- Heather's made this point, I think, in our goal setting is, you know, do we fund something brand new when we still have assets that we still wanna bring back up to to speed? And and yes, we, and that's also where, if if we're gonna end up using some cash for some of these and and we have priorities that we could do versus you be a C N R in a couple of years, you know, do we save, do we save that cash for that? Um the other thing, so you sent out the packet, which I thought was really information informational, but um I got a little concerned when I saw all the costs associated with the splash pad as far as, again, water consumption, maintenance, winterization. Um I know it's gonna be accessible. I had questions on hours open, because I know the pool has certain hours that we keep the pool open. Is the splash pad gonna be open all day for moms who work or for moms who wanna go on their lunch hour? Um tho- those are just my concerns with this. And also, um I know it's downtown, but it's visually not downtown. So it's it's for all of us driving around, it's it's easy to get to, but you still gotta go all the way through Memorial Park to go all the way up to the splash pad. I never picture that being really centrally located. I used to bring my kids to that sprinkler pool all the time, but you know. But um those are my concerns with this project is it are those things. Um and and I don't know, is now the right time to do it?
Give me two minutes, I can answer most of those questions.
Okay.
So ideally, we do daylight out. We could do nine thirty to seven thirty, um and then back it off, just like we do with the pool. As it gets darker at the end of the summer, you lessen the, you lessen the hours, but if you're talking about trying to get kids there, you know, before naptime or after naptime, we're talking about one person, other than our mained staff having to go inspect it every day, which they do now, they go to check the pumps every day now. Um it's one staff person making between fifty, you know, sick, well, this year sixteen and twenty dollars an hour a gate attendant out there, probably a minimum wage or a step above minimum wage. Out there to collect money, monitor, they have a cell phone, they call nine one if something if something is needed. Thankfully, our our ambulance and police are really close by there. Um as for your question about people trying to get there, anybody who doesn't know where it is, they're gonna look it up, they're gonna see an address, twenty-two Plank Hill Road, they're gonna G P S it and get there. I don't think people are gonna have a trouble finding it. It's it's in a really good place too for that whole Masako neighborhood. Everybody's been able to walk there, like they walk, they've walked to the pool for the last sixty years. You know, they walked through, walked across Central School to get there from from Berry Lane and Masako Lane and all those neighborhoods over there. Um the expenses for this for this will be a fraction of what they will for that pool. Right now, we're losing, we're putting, what would you say, Orlando, ten inches of water, eight inches of water in day?
Yes, it's about ten thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, in water. This would be, you basically fill the tank once and it's gonna recirculate the water through the summer with like, you know, it's gonna be chlorinated, um disinfected as it goes through.
Water.
Um you can also have splash pads set up, you know, it's not gonna be running continuously too. If no one's there, there's no one pushing buttons to get the fountains to go, that kind of thing. A lot of these are water like sensory activated, you know, motion sensors, kid walks by, it turns on. Or they hit a uh uh you might have like a tall tulip or something, hit a button to get the water to come down. Um so you're not having the water transpire off the off the um the surfacing in the hot sun. I mean, it would only be on when the kids are there. Uh so if it's a rainy day, it doesn't get used, but the water's still in the holding tank being disinfected. Um I think I, that was most of your questions, right?
Yeah, yeah. And then the other thing that I Diana touched on, um it's like if every other town's gonna have a splash pad, probably nobody's gonna come to use our splash pad.
People in Simsbury will, and we're we're, and we've, as we've seen, this, we're we're a family oriented community, we're only bringing more people into the community with the housing
Well, people in Simsbury will.
proposals and that kind of thing. So we're gonna continue to grow in that manner. It's, if you look at it like we've, we we're making these investments in our in our playgrounds, look all the people, I, you know, my office is right outside the Simsbury Farms playground. The weather now back to, you know, to good spring weather, there's been crowds there every day. It's only gonna get bigger as we go through. This is like a wa- it's like a water playground, and it's gonna be an accessible water playground. So kids who may not have been able to do uh water play at Simsbury Farms or Memorial Pool, we're not making it available to everybody. Kids, kids, adults, they can all interact together. You know, si- uh we've we've brought in additional social services staff and school psychologists over the years. We're trying to help kids learn how to interact with one another and get through that period of isolation that they had. This is an opportunity for kids, families. It's, I would say it's intergenerational, but in a way it is. It's people, it's a community gatherings place, just like the bandshell, um just like the library, just like Simsbury Farms Pool. It's a place where people can gather, talk about, you know, raising their children, kids can learn how to solve problems with one another. It's just like, it's just, it's a water playground. And it's a, it would be something that uh would be a great amenity. I I'm very confident if this project were to make it to referendum eventually, that it's gonna pass. It's it's just one of those things people get excited about, wanna have in their community. It's one of the reasons people moved to Simsbury because of our recreation and park facilities. This just adds, I don't wanna say it's a cherry on top, cuz we have a great Sunday already, but it just adds, you know, it's just adds another layer to what we already have.
I will say, I think it's a better idea than the, and be more utilized than the Memorial Pool as it stands right now.
Oh, I we, I one hundred percent agree with you.
Well, is, uh would we, I I guess the costs and would be that we would assume potentially that we would close Memorial Pool, whether or not we do this, I mean.
If if you don't do this, eventually, we're gonna, I know, I, we don't, unless you give give us a few hundred thousand dollars to patch it, patch it for another ten years or something, that's.
Yeah, okay. Right. So that savings from Memorial Pool is is gonna, I mean, it's gonna, if if we, whether we do the splash pad or not, we're not gonna have the cost of Memorial Pool going forward.
You you will have a fraction of those costs that were allotted to Memorial Pool over the last few years. I mean, I I don't have the exact number right at my fingertips here, but you know, we're we're allotting, I think, forty thousand dollars in seasonal staff uh for the lifeguards over there. When the day, when the day camp's there, we have seven go- seven lifeguards on staff. That's seven people making roughly eighteen to twenty dollars an hour. We could bring the day camp there with one staff, and they're, obviously, their day camp is there. We could open up to the public for, you know, and ha- have a, you know, if they're gonna have a clicker. So there might be, we might set a limit of hundred fifty people, depending on the square footage of the surfacing we put in. Um again, we're doing it with one person versus eight. So we're saving money on seasonal staff, we're saving money on our on our mechanical and utility costs, saving money on water.
Um Mark.
Yeah.
You said that you did one of these, it came in at three million, and you betted for one. What were the, what was the reason why you missed by that money?
Inflation, and that was post-COVID, so we were using ARPA money and the and the uh the inflationary impacts was at it, it was at its peak at that point. That's why the the cost overruns. But I mean, to to, if I can also just address Wendy's point, you know, why would you do something new if you've got, you know, a skate park or tennis courts or whatever that needs help? The real issue, I think, is going to what Diana was alluding to, and that is, what are you gonna do with the pool? You know, and and if the decision is, as it sounds like it would be, the pool's gonna be closed, then you're really talking about taking away from the community, not adding something new. This is a substitute of something that we're essentially saying is going to close at some point. Uh in Poughkeepsie, we put a half a million into that pool just two years before we were forced to close. Uh and so so my experience is telling me that if for no other reason than the the splash pad could be partly grant funded, but a new pool probably couldn't be. And you're probably gonna close that pool. For that reason, we're spending a little time on what's only a hundred and fifty thousand, so you know, we recommend approval of of this because we know that the grant, if the grant wouldn't cover the design phase, and it's only a hundred and fifty thousand, so.
So so I I um, since this is all on bond funded, um to me, this is a nice to have, and I might wanna defer it to see what else we're gonna bond fund this year? Um or do use reserves for and then circle back?
I'm I'm concerned, I I I'm uncomfortable going line by item and actually saying yay or nay, because I think we need to see the bigger picture.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm uncomfortable if we get to a stage and it's like, oh, I approved this tax amount, I'm a little by little, so.
Yeah.
Got it, again, you have.
You wanna go long, you don't have to make that, yeah, you don't have.
I'm trying to, can you do that today by any means?
I'm trying to table this to to the end, and I'm just making my comment that I think it's a nice to have.
But I think we should table majority of it until the end in a lot of ways, because I don't see how we cannot without seeing the whole picture.
All.
Okay.
Sure. Right.
Once we get to the wires and we have.
You like. Which one have the money anymore?
We just have so many things to cover to really get an understanding.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got a quick question.
Just making my comments.
Yeah.
Um to dovetail this or fit it right into Memorial Pool is all of the dilapidated, no doubt. To do the renovation into a splash pad immediately as we demolish the pool, is there a cost savings over waiting like a year? Does it have to be instantaneous, shut the pool, build the splash pad?
No.
Or is there there, if there's no real cost savings to it?
No, I wouldn't think, no, I don't think there would be, other than other than what we've talked about inflation, the longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost. The the one, the big negative there is what do we do with the day camp? So I mean, the day camp is the town's largest recreation program. Again, it's gonna have a hundred and ten kids paying two hundred and fifty dollars a week right now to to go there. Uh the water part, the water part of that, you know, obviously, it's hot during the summer, the water park's always been a big part of the day camp. So what do we do at that point? If we're not transitioning from the pool to the splash pad, we could potentially lose revenue where those kids might go somewhere else. Uh and that is our most prof- by far, our most profitable program that we do, outside of the golf course.
And one other follow up, just knowledge question, were any other sites considered for the splash pad or that was solely a remedy for?
No, so a few years ago, when in this, when the concept first, when I first started, um Eric Wellman and and uh Bob Hensley from the Package, we we explored possibilities of putting it down on the, there's nowhere, there's not a good site down there. It's most of the areas in the wetlands. So to do something like this would be very problematic. You'd also, at that time, would have been taken away parking, or if you tried to squeeze it into the others, the the far side of the field, you're, then you're, you're half, you know, you're two hundred yards away from the nearest parking spot at that point. There just wasn't a good uh site down there to do that. And and again, with the flood plain, this, everything at Memorial is nice, high and dry up there, so.
Not to say there's no room at Simsbury Farms or other aquatic or whatever you call it.
Yeah, we, uh I'd love to put it at Sims, good and bad at Simsbury Farms, um parking's a challenge there. There's really, with the hills, there's really not a great spot to put that. Um it makes se- it makes sense for the reasons I said before with parking and and the utilities and the amenities we have at at Memorial Pool. Again, we're making a decision what to do. We've always had some kind of aquatic feature there. Why not? And it benefits, uh having the the restroom there could benefit, you know, looking at it from a couple of sides. Do you sports get get to benefit out of it? The public gets the benefit, the day camp gets the benefit, the town benefits, cuz it cost, we have an efficient facility that's getting people up there, additional revenue, and it costs less to run than it does now.
Okay, last question for me. Um can the bathroom still be saved if we demolish the pool and have that amenity for the ball fields?
That building would need to be renovated, yes. It could, but the building could be saved.
Number or little number? I know, it's not a pool.
Not not not, it depends what your what your idea limits. Yeah, I I would say.
It wouldn't be my idea of little, but.
I I would say minimum six figures, at least a hundred thousand to renovate that building.
Yeah, plenty too.
Okay.
Is the, is the bath renovation a part of this total project cost?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, okay, you're right, that's right.
Yeah, we, at at minimum, new roof, a new ceiling, uh plumbing fixtures. It's a little tight accessibility wise getting around in that building. Um right, so right now, there's no, if you open up the ba- buildings to the public, there are no ceilings, there's just rafters in there. People can get in and potentially get over to the pool side of the building, um or go out the back door to the pool. That's why we don't open, one of the reasons we don't open up. Back in the day, I mean, Steve would know, there used to be a concession stand, there used to be a concession stand on the, on the front of that building.
There you go.
That that big steel window is actually a small, was a small con- concession stand for the pool and for some of the ball fields up there at one point. You, we all know that Little League has that concession stand on the lower level there. There's not, again, for people who whose kids are playing softball, my daughter plays softball up there, there's no concessions up top. That's something Little League I may wanna see, um would like, I'm sure they'd like to see it, um cuz they're doing all their tournament games on Field Five and Field Six now. Um and maybe even the high school for high school and and American Legion. That could potentially bring in some additional money toward the project if we included a concession stand part of it. Uh again, we might make money out of it too, is if we're, if we decide to operate it, because we're gonna be bringing all those people to the splash pad during the summer, we may opt wanna opt in to operate a small concession stand, so.
Are there any plans to um bring in baseball tournaments? So like, if you had, you know, a bunch of people coming coming in from the town, and they want to have a baseball tournament, I know other towns do this. Um could there be additional revenue by allowing those people who may be here for a couple of days, attending these tournaments? To be able to use that facility and then also maybe make some money off of it?
So so for Little League, yeah, I mean, there's potential for Little League tournaments, cuz we have five li- five Little League fields, right? Uh we only have one varsity softball field, the old men's softball field isn't necessarily uh designed for high school, for high school or travel, for travel ball play. Uh so we're limited in bringing in tournaments that way. So what we, the calls we normally get are somebody who's who's got a larger facility and they need an additional field in a town nearby to to get people in and out of. Uh those are the calls we normally get. We do get some rentals at when we're at the uh at the high school size field up there occasionally. Um west, uh from a local perspective, Westminster, not Westminster, Master School rents the softball field from us a couple of times during the season because they don't have a home field. So they do, last year, last year, I think they did two home games, this year, they're looking for three or four. Um you know, we're not talking about they rent hundred fifty dollars a field uh for a game or something like that. But yeah, to your thought, could it, could it, during the summer months, could we rent to a Little League tournament, if a Little League tournament, if they were looking for a bi-field complex, we might be able to meet to meet them.
What is the time plan for this? So if we move, say we move forward, what are we looking at, full close splash pad?
So it, you know, we would know by, obviously, early May if the money was approved or not through the through the budgeting process. We we obviously start, um I put an R, an R F P for a design firm, and then do public input process through the fall, get a design. So when we come, when I'm sitting here next year in front of all of you, we have a solid number coming back. We have a design that could show you, it's gonna wow all of you, you're not gonna be able to stop smiling and say, Tom, we can't wait to give you a million dollars to go build a splash pad. And then ideally, that gets approved in May, and we're probably looking at two, so two more seasons of Memorial Park as it is now. So we're looking at probably spring of twen- uh uh summer twenty-six opening at this point.
Which I think Diana, to your point, if I know where you're going on this, is that if you don't do it now, it's a whole year and maybe no- nothing happens.
Yeah.
But uh Wendy, if I can, on Heather's suggestion, we'll we'll jump ahead and circle back, which I think makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One of you.
Yeah.
So you know, we can go to the next slide and we'll we'll circle back on these rather than go through one at a time. Is is that all right?
Yeah, I wanted to just comment, I, that's was my intention, but you, when we talked about the reserve fund, you wanted to get a idea.
Yeah, there were a few of these, yeah.
So if there's things that are definitely reserves and that maybe we could later consider for reserves, we can talk about them after.
Yep, okay.
Oh, all right. Support of going through the one by one, I'm starting support of voting on them one by one right now.
He, yeah, we want, yeah, we thought.
Well, yeah, you really can't, because until you know what the, what, right, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're still going through them, right?
We're going through them, I know, we need to do, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you wanna go back to the other slide, right?
Okay.
We go back in the slide.
You don't need me anymore, right?
We did.
Come back to you later.
Stay tuned.
So you don't, that's for the next slide.
No, we're gonna go.
Charlie, I know, I think, I do want to go for you to vote on them, right?
Yeah, we do.
You do?
Yeah, yeah, we do. We just wanna, if we have que- cuz I have, we, I think people have questions on some of the other C I P items, right?
Okay, okay. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Um so the next, yeah, next one is.
Keep going.
I know they do.
Pavement management.
We're gonna spend an hour on each one.
No.
I think we can do this one in three minutes or less. No, I don't think these, these, next three, I think are fairly, they're all from last year.
Yeah.
Um pav- pavement management is just a strategy of maintaining our roadways. It it it's something we implemented about fourteen years ago. And it began with paving some of our roads that were not in the worst conditions first. And the strategy behind that is to repair or resurface a road at that time was about eight dollars a square yard. If we let roads completely fall apart, we had to do what's called reconstruction, and at the time, it was in the thirty dollars per square yard range, so four times as much. Through that process and over a number of years, we brought our overall roadway surface to a very good condition here in Simsbury. What we're doing now is we're paving or resurfacing um about ten miles per year of our hundred and sixty-five miles of roadway we own, which basically says, on average, we resurfaced roads once every seventeen years. Can't stress enough, on average, busy roads with heavier truck traffic need to be resurfaced more often. Um in the last two years, we've seen uh liquid asphalt costs, which drive our paving costs skyrocket. That's why the number's gone up in the last two years. We actually are forecasting that it may actually come down. We are continuing to experiment with some new resurfacing methods. Um I'm gonna call them very modern versions of chip seal. Chip seal's not very popular here in Simsbury. It's a very affordable way to maintain some of our more rural roads. But uh two years ago, we we put a um a modern version of a chip seal out on West Mount. But uh two years ago, we we put a um a modern version of a chip seal out on West Mount, for example. And Kevin Clemmons in the back there and myself were just out there um last week walking it to see how it it's holding up. And it looks like that may be a strategy to go forward, which allows us to spend less per mile to maintain our roads than if we let them go to working.
What is chip seal?
Oh, chip seals, chip seals that lovely stuff, Adam in particular is a big fan, where in the summertime you'll see loose stone and you see the signs everywhere and you're driving over gravel for a week and then we sweep it up and then it has a a very coarse texture compared to normal pavement. Um, a lot of towns use it. Um, the downside is it's a rougher surface when you're done and you have that week, week and a half period where you have the loose stones and you have to drive very slow. Um. It does not last as long as the traditional asphalt, but it's very cost effective as a method to keep roads in service. What we're now doing is that same type of product that immediately is adhered to the roadway, no loose stone and it's only three eighths of an inch thick which allows the good roads to stay.
So what?
I said, I said pavement would be easy, we could do it in three minutes.
Okay, okay, then.
Keep going.
Tell the flower bridge.
Okay, so Leo, let's just, yeah, uh so let's ask, that's a good point. Do we have any questions on anything between um the Terrapole Connection? Also there's sidewalk recon- reconstruction, the Public Works truck, not the Terrapole Connection, but those, the three public works items. Um, I just have one, I do have a question on it. Let's look at.
Sure.
Is there ever an opportunity to take a holiday from any of those? Um, in in a in a tight year, either for the operating, the general fund operating transfer or for for the sidewalks? So you guys have been working, we still have the sidewalks that we have to get to for the Flyer Town to Henry James, that whole piece of sidewalk, which is grant funded, so just is that an open option?
Yeah, but but I I would just say within the the sidewalk funding, we have different programs. The program up there is to resurface it um the existing sidewalk network that we already have. For years, we put no money into our sidewalks, the sidewalks fell into a state of disrepair.
Yeah.
Uh, in some neighborhoods, people actually let them just grass over, they were so so bad. Um, it has been a very successful program that we've been doing since two thousand nineteen where we've been rehabilitating our existing sidewalks. And with that, we're also bringing them up to ADA standards with replacement of the curb ramps. That was one of the big drivers. Uh, but we've we've gotten an amazing amount of traction out of doing these small sidewalk jobs in-house. Um, I mean, the best example is up three fifteen where we did all of those sidewalks three years ago. That project was two hundred thousand dollars. And we got all of those sidewalks compared to when we're putting in new sidewalks along some of our state roadways with grant money, they're million dollar projects.
Okay. Okay, that's, um.
So in general, since you asked a question, I I'd be uh very much in favor of fully funding these kinds of C I P projects, the investment for us in the long run, um, is there?
Okay. Okay. Let you know. Um, so what's the next item? Sorry to interrupt there. Well, the the greenway we just, we just is grant funded pretty much and using savings from what we funded a couple years ago with ARPA, correct?
Right, we would be using uh those funds as our match to the deep trails grant that we just submitted. Um, and we should hear about that sometime in May or June, when we receive those funds. Uh, but yeah, we'd be using those, you know, older funds to match our, I think, the eighty twenty split on that.
Okay, so so let's jump to the uh Flower Bridge?
The Flower Bridge is, um, that was funded, I think, last C I P, uh, and we had had about two point one million dollars in, um, for construction, just for the construction phase, it's not till complete. Um, through the design period, we discovered it's much more in-depth um investigation to the condition of the bridge. Uh, we actually flew drone around the entire bridge to get a really tight look on it, all the different nooks and crannies. And through that process, additional steel repairs were realized, um, that we didn't anticipate during like cursor inspections that initiated in the design phase. Um, so that led to some additional costs that we didn't anticipate. Um, of course, as we've been talking about, the bid environment is pretty uh difficult right now. So we have kind of select contractors that are actually bidding this work and what have you. So we went out to bid, um, towards the end of the summer, I believe. And the bids ranged from two point nine to four point one million dollars. We then took another look at the whole design and went through what we call value engineering phase where we start to pick out things that we don't necessarily need. Um, one of those items is changing the decking type to a fiberglass system, um, which for longevity would make sense. Uh, but it also adds a few hundred thousand dollars. Um, we had some other, you know, repairs that were more cosmetic in nature than, you know, structural requirements that we also kind of scaled back on. We re redesigned how the railing can be attached, um, and found a simpler way to do that. So we went out to bid again, hoping to be somewhere around that one point eight, one point nine billion, that would allow us to go forward with the money we had. Um. And those bids came in, I believe, around two point three to two point seven. So one one thing that makes us feel a bit better about that number is that it was five different contractors bidding around that that area. So it's not like the first bid where we had somebody over four, um, when you kind of wonder, well, are we missing something? So the additional funds we're asking for is really to fund a contingency portion of that that project. Uh, because, you know, we can get a bid in at two point three, but we still need to add, you know, ten percent contingency, especially cause as we take the timber, um, decking off, you know, the members, we might discover further deterioration that needs to be repaired. So we always want somewhat of a cushion there. Um, then we have our inspection costs as well. So we feel that the number that you see before you today is a, it's a good number to proceed. Uh, we've confirmed to their contractor that they're comfortable with waiting until the referendum passes uh in May. Um, and their schedule just simply shifts. And that was something we were very upfront with all the bidders with is, hey, if you give us a one point seven million dollar project, we can get going as soon as possible. But if it's over, you know, our referendum number, we have to leave. Um, so that's kind of where we're at today with it. And we've been working with the Flower Bridge Group, uh, coordinating schedule and um kind of working through their needs as well as part of this project.
So if this passed in the um referendum, what's the schedule change? You know, right now the bridge is closed and.
Right, and that's the other really unfortunate thing is we closed the bridge anticipating favorable uh bid environment and, and here we are.
Right.
So the schedule essentially shifts a few months. We met with them earlier this um this past week to kind of go through that scope, logistics, schedule. Uh, and it looks like we get started sometime in May after the referendum passes and can sign contracts and all that good stuff. And their schedule would shift, um, so that it would be, I think, ending around Thanksgiving, early December. Um, we, of course, asked the question, can we tighten it up? Um, and unfortunately, as we're discussing, it's really nothing that we can tighten up. Uh, in fact, they're a little nervous about that fall weather and the ability to paint, recoach the bridge with the heating system. So they are going to be working in earnest, I think, when we get get them a contract.
I think one one of the things that that uh need, you know, why why does a project like this cost so much is the question. I certainly think, uh, we can hear from residents and the entire bridge has to be encapsulated. So as they're um removing existing paint, as they're removing existing rust and steel, there is gonna be nothing that goes into the wild and scenic part of it. It's gonna be fully tented, so that's a huge portion of the cost. And it's also be gonna gonna be done under very strict quality control standards so that it's, it's not just simply paint. It's a coating system which is gonna keep the bridge um in in a very good condition for the next thirty plus years.
I I'll just make a couple comments and then we can move on. Well, so last year, we we approved the funding for the bridge. Um, at the time, we, the board, that with the financing mechanism was changed afterwards, but the board um wanted to use ARPA funds, which is federal funds to show, um, because we heard from a lot of members of the community, we understand the value of the bridge to downtown. We do get a lot of visitors and tourism there. And so that is a is a big central point in the in the bridge and it's kind of iconic for Simsbury. Um, so I just wanted to make that point that it was it was very important to the board last year and that's why we prioritized it last year, um, so.
Is is there, uh, uh.
No, 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 you go ahead.
Um, if you delay to the year, is there, could the bridge be be reopened? Is it not safe currently?
Well, it that and and I'm surprised we don't have our Flower Bridge Committee here. They would tell you, they they normally would have already ordered the plans for this coming season.
Yeah.
They they, I'm telling you, they are organized and they have a system down that's that's really, really something impressive with the number of volunteers that we're having. But in order for the bridge to have flowers on it this year under their normal process, they would have already ordered from the greenhouses to have the plants start. Could they still jump on? Probably, they would probably see a significant upcharge and maybe the quality of the plants would be different. Um, the other challenge we have is now that we have design plans that are ready to go based upon the condition of the bridge, um, this past summer. As you wait, there's still additional corrosion that's going on and we have to be careful that, um, if we wait too long, those plans have to be refreshed.
But it, you could pass, is there a safety issue with the curtain?
There there is not a safety issue with the bridge right now. It is, it is safe for pedestrians. A couple years back, we had a minor issue where for a while we were trying to load restrict the bridge. Um, we actually were able to do an in-house repair to bring it back up to its full capacity. Um, there are some um items that we would have to keep an eye on, um, just in terms of the design code for a bridge, there are certain loading conditions, um, that some of the diagonal members, we're not to get too far into the engineering weeds here. Um, if their corrosion accelerated significantly over the next two years, we would have to look to either shut it down or limit the bridge. Don't see that happening and it's only for some very unique loading situations.
So how long is, if we did nothing, how long is the bridge safe for?
It's it it is definitely safe. Um, and it's safe for the next few years, certainly. Like all bridges, it it makes sense to do routine inspections. So if the decision was not to do anything, we would just make sure that we keep it on a good inspection log to make sure. And I would still recommend some minor repairs be done at this time.
So this is my question for you guys. Does the entire project go back to referendum? So it's as though it didn't exist last time?
Yeah, because the supplemental pushes it over that threshold, so now the pro- the total project cost.
And then it.
If it's something that then we didn't approve now or was referendum and the residents don't approve it, what happens to the one point nine that was allocated for the project?
Well. Whatever Adam's already spent, I guess, is gone and then any surplus funds go back to capital reserve?
Do we didn't bond for it or do we have anything with the one point nine? It's just like in a holding place or are we?
I thought we were buying.
That was approved to twenty four.
Twenty four.
Yeah, we have bought for it, yeah.
We have made it. But it was approved, we did do motions to approve it for bonding, correct?
It'll be bonded to twenty five.
So do we have to, so if if we move this forward, this, so those approvals are done, do they stay in place or do they get scrapped and we redo it for the full amount? Or do we just bond for the extra five hundred and add it to, you know, it?
Yeah, you guys are approving the supplemental.
Yeah.
The the referendum question is just, but yes, that you're right, because there the voters would have to approve the full project basically again.
Right. Yes.
Um. This is a unique circumstance.
Right, cause so we bought, we approved bonding of one point nine last year, so that's already done if we go forward with it. Those are going out to bond this year, is that true?
They're going out to bond in twenty five.
Okay, so twenty five, twenty, well, twenty five.
Twenty five.
When I say this year, I mean this year, yeah, twenty five. Um, so that's already done, so we would have to bond or do another funding mechanism for the extra five hundred thousand, correct? So we could bond if we've decided to use money reserved or something like that. Um, and that's the piece that we would have to do administratively and go to referendum.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, so.
Just for clarification, I think it'll have to stay for the Flower Bridge, it's not like that money um can move to something else, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, yeah. Yeah, I'm just saying.
So we were talking about it would go back into, I just, it would have to stay the voter's decision for that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If we have another rainy summer, how does this affect the project and how would it affect the um contracted, you know, were we gonna look at additional cost if it doesn't get done this year, even if we approve it and it passes referendum and then we you know, how's the weather gonna affect it and how's it gonna affect the cost? And that's like the, nobody knows the answer really, but.
Right, right, and there's, the good thing about the one plus side of being over the river and needing to tend the entire structure is that it it's kept out of weather. The only thing we need to worry about is the river coming up.
Hmm.
Um.
Which.
Which impacts.
Pretty close last year.
It's a bit of a hit though. Um.
Practically touch it.
But that's part of the contract with the, you know, contractors that, um, they're responsible for that decking system that that's in place. Uh, so the biggest thing um that impacts us with this project is the temperature of the of the air because of ambient temperatures for painting, I think, in your house and whatnot, the same kind of thing with the coating system.
And and just one more thing, we did fund three hundred thousand dollars the year before, we used or cash.
That was for design.
ARPA, right? And so when you say project savings here, is that money left over from that three hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we did spend a whole amount uh for design, um, we got lucky on that, correct?
Okay.
And um so that just comes into kind of inspection costs and, and we need to see if this can, for the contract, we start.
Okay. Okay.
You mentioned the load, I just had interesting, your question about that, obviously it's not the same as what it was originally designed for, it's just pedestrian, you know, uh, there, could you, go ahead.
Well, well, what I would tell you that 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 is shocking is um pedestrian load is basically a hundred pounds per square foot. Um, a parts, a a a park, a parking garage is uh forty pounds per square foot. And that was a one lane bridge, it's uh
Interesting, okay.
it it's it's designed for essentially, you know, absolutely s- um teeming with people all leaning over both sides at the same time. And that's what I was saying, that very unique loading condition would be is if we had a very large number of very large people all leaning over the same same side.
Having hamburgers on those, yeah, and, okay, yeah, I get it.
It.
I was gonna say burgers on the bridge, yeah.
I get it, it was me, it was that, it for me, I get it, okay, thank you.
And and it and it's one of those loading conditions that's it's highly uh unlikely, but that's the design standard that um our engineers did
Yeah, I I.
and that's what we're gonna make sure to follow and attempt, yeah.
Don't need to, don't need to remember. Great.
So speaking of, of, what about the duck race? I mean, like, the bridge is open for the duck race, correct?
Yeah, and I'll be honest, I've seen the duck race. The duck race, again, especially when you factor in the kids nowhere close to that loading condition, but.
I just wanna make sure. Yeah, no, I wasn't, yeah, but.
That, that a couple years ago, we did have, we put some tables out and things to minimize the loading. Um, until we we made a small fix. The bridge sits on basically four bearings, two on either side of the river. It sit on the abutment. One of the bearings had some corrosion, um, that was a concern during the inspection, so um we were able to fix that in-house.
So the cl- I'm just, the closing is the closing as of not till later, it'll
Right, there, again, there's no problem out there.
It's a technical closing for flowers, but it's not a closing to people until you guys start working on it.
Exactly. Yeah.
Why was it closed though? Like, if there if there's no structural problem, couldn't it still be open right now?
It is open.
It is open.
Yeah.
It is open.
Oh, I think it was closed, oh.
No, it's all, it's it's no flowers.
No, no flowers and no events.
Ah.
And 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 again, that's where it's tough, it's it's, um, Tom's behind me saying, you know, they have a lot of weddings down there and things and it's great for photos and
Mm-hmm.
um, and and I'm always amazed how many TV commercials for things that are not necessarily Simsbury but Connecticut. And they all seem to use the Flower Bridge and it's a big part of Simsbury.
That's true.
So there would be no like burgers on the bridges here?
That was our goal, was to get it back open for burgers on the bridge.
Got it.
Um, Adam even called the contractor to say, you know, what are the chances?
There aren't.
Oh, that's in September, is that September, is that right? Is it, it's it's after the, okay.
Yeah, that one happened.
There 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 has been no, no, no shortage of effort to try to get this done.
Okay.
We do it in the parking lot.
Right.
Okay. So.
We're goodbye, right?
The new item that's on here, the new, is the um town hall rooftop units, is that, would you speak to that?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Um, that was part of our facilities master plan. It's basically repay, replacing the uh large air conditioning units to do this entire building. They'll be twenty years old, um, that's the useful life of an air conditioning unit, it was identified. Um, I I'm not sure why it didn't make it on earlier, but um it's just routine maintenance for the building.
It was showing up in C N R in years past, but with the adjustments, some of the adjustments to the, we moved it over to the capital plan just based on the cost.
Okay. Um, so one, just one quick question on that.
Yeah.
It it shows the breakout though, um, the two thirty is not till, you're specifically year twenty twenty six, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's just when you would, a design and then go to construction.
And then the. Okay, so just the question I asked before, do you separate the costs and could you, you know, potentially fund the design and 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 then bond for the rest when it's it's time for it to happen? I guess those are the questions we could talk to them later, right? See what the impact is. Okay, what's next? Any questions on any other capital items? Well, we have to go to, is the board of, is Jason here? Is he gonna speak to any of the board of that items? I don't see him.
He wasn't able to um make it today. I I could probably speak very high level on some of these, um, but there's also the, obviously the project sheets and the budget book. Um, the board of that has four projects, you can see up there. Um, the district network infrastructure is typically um technology type items. This is a recurring program that they have every other year, although I will say this year, I know that the the focus is. Although I will say this year, I know that the the focus is on security, it's more about the 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 F O B system in and out of the the entrances to the building. So it's um a more security um focus this year for that project. Uh district flooring um
Yep.
is an attempt to um consolidate the carpet and flooring replacement district wide. Um because they hadn't had like a recurring program for that type of work um that it's wasn't able to be absorbed under their C N R and their operating budget. Um auditorium, amphitheater, I think those are sort of refurbs and I think there's lighting and I'd have to refer to the project sheet for that one. Um and then the Two and Hills roof, it's two of the four sections of that roof.
So just the the district flooring is a new ask, it hasn't been in the budget before, so you're saying it moved from C N R?
Correct, so it's they're sort of, they've managed that more of an ad hoc basis in terms of, you know, what the needs are in individual buildings and it's sort of an effort to consolidate that and get on a better program for replacements.
Is there any indication of the critical need for the the flooring? I mean, it doesn't really address when it was the last time, how critical this need is from the board of that. Is there any more detail on that? I mean, just 'cause it's just a new, it's new to hear and it's they're bonding for it, so.
Yeah, um we can get that detailed, I I'm sure we can pull something.
Okay, but it was C N R, we moved here to and in C N R, were we paying or using the payback? Were they using the payback for that before or were?
That's all they had was payback.
Okay, so we're basically putting it in this tab here. Um any anybody have any other questions?
I I do just sticking with flooring, I see a basement seventy grand every other year. Is there any danger or is it, wouldn't you encapsulate it for flooring over it? You you probably don't know. Never mind, it just, you know, seven thousand every other year for a basement seems like, it's not a current thing.
Maybe tomorrow I can help us out.
My newest mistake sitting up here. Um they, a lot, a lot of times with the um the tile flooring, the mastic used to hold it down has asbestos in it.
You can solve it.
So as they're replacing the flooring, um they have two choices, like you said, to encapsulate it or to remove it. I think that's money allocated so that they can remove it and get that material out of the hole. And it's not a safety hazard because it's again, it's encapsulated under the tile.
Okay. Now just, I I was just gonna comment, some of these moved up two years um in the capital plan. I guess, I'm sure the explanation is in here, but the municipal site safety improvements for town hall had been in twenty six, twenty seven, right? Moved it up to twenty five, twenty six, so they're kind of new this year, right?
And that would just be to tie in, that's redoing the back parking lots here and to tie in with the other parking lot projects.
Are they, are those considered items that we have to approve?
Since it showed up on the plan.
Okay, so so wherever it was on the plan, it doesn't matter. Got it, thank you.
Right.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
I had a question on the the auditorium, the board of those dollars. Um and I guess the board of that's not here, so um just to mourn out seats and yeah, is that something that we could push out a little bit further along? Um just 'cause in the tight year you need to really replace the flooring and the seating.
I wouldn't want to speak to that. I I know that part of it was the uh seating and part of it was the lighting and that the lighting was was significantly twenty thirty, forty year, I mean, it it it's old. Um more than that, I I don't know, so I defer to uh board of that and to the superintendent on this.
I mean, I could tell you from usage, 'cause I use it, um the lighting, the sound, if and if anybody, because it's not just performing arts, I mean, the entire um entire school uses the auditorium, uh whether it's for um s- senior night events, whether it's for awards recognition, whether you uh National Honor Society assemblies, um all kinds of things. And the lighting is not only inefficient, uh the sound equipment is also compromised. So I will bring up the musical and if anybody went, you could see like the mics didn't work half the time. And the board is fine, but you have uh uh
Interference.
pack equipments, you have interference, but you have the the mic pack uh units are are so outdated and so and broken most of the time. The lighting is not only inefficient, but it will eventually become a fire hazard. Um kind of, kind of like, you know, um but yeah, but they, you know, so that is something that um with additional, I'm not saying we should not push it off, but like everything else, the the cost of lighting and sound equipment has gone up significantly over the last several years. Um I think there may be ways, I don't know about around lighting, but on sound pieces, there may be um ways that we can defer some things and create partnerships with other organizations to utilize sound equipment. Um I haven't know. Um so, you know, that is something we could we could look at. I don't know how much sound equipment is wrapped up into that, that is something I don't know. But I do know from um the the technology standpoint, that's only part of that uh that budget. Uh but it is significantly outdated. And uh it is something that, you know, not only the entire school, but outside organizations uses as well.
So I did have one question on that. Um and it sounded like the lighting in the amphitheater or the auditorium was was critical 'cause they said it was very old and it was very hot. But I I was questioning why the tie-in with the amphitheater seating, because they're two separate rooms and
Yeah.
and you know, is there a way if one is a priority and one's not a priority, do we split them out? Um that was one question. The other question that Diana just pointed out, which I had read, was didn't make the list, was the eno curtains and lighting, which was pushed off. Now, we is the high school curtains and lighting more important than the eno curtains and lighting and is that something we should maybe look at swapping? I I I just, I don't, I don't, I don't get on stage, so I don't know, but I'm just mentioning that, just to put that out here. Um it's a question that I might have or make right back. Um are there any other questions on the C I P? And then I would think we may we want to take a five minute break. Um or and or you guys maybe do, is there a summarization that you guys want to do or?
Why don't we do one more slide real quick and then that might be a better time for a break, if that's all right with you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so just something that we didn't include in this presentation when it went out, because it went out before the board of finance meeting the other night. But just keeping in mind that, you know, the primary source of funding or the majority of our funds for the C I P come from bonding. Um I think you're aware, the board of finance set some targets the other night at their meeting around operating and capital, one of which was, you know, limiting our debt service line item um every year. And the guidance was um to keep it to about eight and a half million dollars per year. Um so in order to achieve this, and this is a slide that we added, in order to achieve this for fiscal year twenty five, um this is essentially what we would need to cut from the plan in order to get to that target of eight and a half million debt service. Um so essentially cutting all of our bond funded projects. Um the highway pavement management program is partially funded by bonds, so that would, you know, cut that project down pretty significantly. So this is just an illustration to, you know, just to show if we had to get down to that number, that's what would happen.
I'm at a weird angle, can I get a copy of that?
Yeah, could we all get a copy of that? That would be really helpful. The the question I have on that though, Melissa, is um that's assuming um we don't use reserves, we don't substitute reserves for some of those bonded projects, right? And that's
Correct, yeah, just as proposed right now, yeah.
Yeah, and so one of the questions was, was that we had um
You can ring them, just tell them the names.
two and a half million in reserves after what's proposed in the budget to work with across um the C I P, the C N R, right? And to leave us healthy balance. So those would be things that we would discuss as a board, if there's things up there that we want to do and if we want to bond or if we want to use cash that's available, we can do that too, correct?
But if we use cash that's available out of those reserves and keeps our reserves healthy, but then we don't have grand list growth for the next few years, just just that, so we're using the only solution that we have over the next four years, all in this year.
And that is exactly why the town manager preliminary did go all in on using reserves. We we used a little bit for capital, a little bit for C N R and left the bulk of it for this board to consider that very important question. Uh but given, as Melissa just said, the guidance from uh from B O F with respect to, you know, our our bonding limits, uh these, this is where the rubber meets the road and why we wanted to do capital and C N R first and then talk to departments individually about the operating side later. Um because that's exactly where where this go and I think that's a good point for a break.
Yeah, but firstly though, can you give us a number, like that you would recommend um it would would a hedging number? So like if we don't want to go down to the minimum that we need, but will there be a number that would kind of protect us in next year?
So I mean, the the policy decision of where the reserves at is the board of finances. Um it also doesn't take into account, um you know, any savings that we may have between, you know, this year and next year if we're, you know, over or under budget.
Right.
But it depends how conservative you want to be with the budget. Are we gonna have savings? And if you're gonna be less conservative, then you might not have savings and you might be in a position where you're utilizing reserves.
Okay. Yeah.
So um more than it's like
We we take the position on the administrative side that you you want to leave yourself a healthy
Okay. Yep.
a healthy number in there, whether it's half a million or a million, I mean, that's up to you. And certainly, our proposal
Okay.
was very respectful of the need to worry about next year because no matter what we do, the grand list growth isn't gonna suddenly my jump, jump up. Uh I think the projection I saw at board of finance was what? Point point eight, slightly better. I mean, so it's slightly being a couple hundred thousand maybe. But uh that's exactly what we need to worry about.
Okay, um break.